He wants us to start up here.
Yeah, it was.
You want to start us there?
It's a public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, and then for the town meeting, we'll move to the back.
Let's go, Phil. Let's go on, Sean.
How you doing, Mike?
Do good, man. Happy first day of summer.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Days are getting shorter after this. I don't like.
Oh, don't even say that. Take that back.
Okay, better than Thursday. You went through a group. What do you care?
Did you give me a agenda?
Oh, yeah.
Good evening. The time is 6:30, and I'll now call this public hearing of the Board of Selectmen to order. The first thing I'm going to do this evening is I'm going to read the legal notice as it was published in the River East. This is Board of Selectmen Legal Notice of Public Hearing, June 21st, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Buck Foreman Community Room located at 265 Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, 06480. Pursuant to Section 506 of the Portland Town Charter, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Buck Foreman Community Room to consider public comments and questions, both orally and in writing, on the requested use of $35,000 for the replacement of the Company Number Three Generator and related propane tank. Public access also through Zoom Link A at wwwportlandct.org dated this seventh day of June 2023, attested Ryan J. Curley, Portland First Selectman. And so we'll open this up to public comments. For those of you who were not at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, there was a discussion on this among the Board of Selectmen and Chief Shea, who was there to answer questions regarding the current generator at Firehouse Company Three and the state that it's in. This has been something that's been a long time coming, and I think it's, we're lucky that we have the American Rescue Funds available to use this. But we want to open it up to public comment, see if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on the generator for Company Three Firehouse. I see Tommy Jen is here this evening. Thank you for your work on this, putting this together. We're excited to get this going. Does anybody want to comment? Is there anyone online that would like to comment?
The only thing I will say, Ryan, with Bob Shea's presentation at the last meeting, we know that the generator is ancient, but the one thing I didn't realize until his explanation is that currently somebody has to go in to kick that generator, turn that generator on. And in a situation with lost power or whatever, it just makes perfect sense for a modern-style generator that will turn itself on when the power goes out. But, you know, that on top of the age of that generator, it's a no-brainer for me.
Going once? Going twice? I think, as we discussed last time, there was, seemed to be unanimous support among the Board of Selectmen, so this will likely go forward at our regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM this evening. So the way American Rescue Funds work is that because it's a, these are federal dollars that were allocated to the town of Portland through the American Rescue Plan Act, and with that, the, one of the requirements is a public participation. So that's why we discuss, and we discussed the resolution at our last Board of Selectmen meeting. We set this date for a public hearing so we could hear from the town, the townspeople, if, you know, what their thoughts were. We're assuming by the, you know, quietness right now that there's just a ground support, and you guys are all in favor of it. And so I know this body is as well. So with that, if there's no comment, we will close the public hearing at 6:34 PM. And then, as I mentioned, there will be a resolution that will come before the board at our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. So, thank you. And our next public hearing will be at 6:40 PM. And that public hearing is going to be on a supplemental appropriation for police private duty. And then at 6:45 PM, we have a, another public hearing, and this is on a supplemental appropriation for two parts. There is a $205,000 total allocation being requested with $125,000 for a roof replacement at the Portland Town Hall, as well as $80,000 for a security communication upgrade equipment at the Portland, for the Portland schools. So again, I'll conclude with that, and we'll reconvene in five minutes. Good evening again. The time is 6:40, and I'm now calling our second public hearing of the evening to order. Once again, I'm going to read the legal notice of the public hearing, and then after that, for this, there is a special town meeting that will be held as well following our public hearings. So first, I'm going to read this. This is a legal notice of public hearing from the Board of Selectmen dated Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:40 PM, Town of Portland, Connecticut, 06480. Pursuant to Chapter 12, Section 1203.4 of the Town Charter, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:40 PM at the Buck Foreman Community Room located at 265 Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, regarding the proposed supplemental appropriation in the amount of $104,000. At the hearing, all interested persons may be heard and written communications will be received. Public access is also through Zoom Link A at wwwportlandct.org. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portland Board of Selectmen hereby approves the supplemental appropriation of $95,000 to the General Fund Line Item Number 01-023-000-14014, Police Private Duty, and $9,000 to the General Fund Line Item Number 01-023-000-51001, Gas and Diesel, and an increase in estimated revenue to Line Item Number 01-000-000-00324, Police Private Duty, in the amount of $104,000 dated at Portland, Connecticut, the seventh day of June 2023, attested Ryan J. Curley, First Selectman. And so we'll open it up to public comments for anyone who wishes to comment. For those of you who may be wondering what this is, is the police private duty is an expense that happens when there's roadwork in town with the, that maybe the state, there's bridge traffic. In this case, this year, the Frontier Fiber Installation has caused a lot of police private duty as the, you know, the trucks, the Frontier trucks need to install the fiber. They hire one of our police officers to, you know, make sure that traffic runs smoothly and all that. And Frontier actually pays for that. So, but we pay the expense, and then they pay the town. And so what happens is they increase, it increases our budget, is what it does. And so because of that, we do a supplemental appropriation at the end of the year to adjust for that increased fee. So we've gotten increased revenue, but we've also had increased bills, you know, to pay at the same time. But the town does make a profit off this slightly. So if anyone wishes to comment publicly on this supplemental appropriation, you may do so now if you'd like. Is there anyone online? And again, there will be a special town meeting today at 6:50 PM on this issue. So there will be a vote and another chance for discussion as well at the special town meeting. So if you're shy now and change your mind, get a second chance. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public hearing at 6:44 PM. And we have a third public hearing at 6:45 PM. So we'll wait a minute, and we'll move on to the next one. I don't know if we have anyone taking their minutes this evening. So just make sure that everyone speaks clearly into the microphone, so Michelle can. Is it 6:45? All right. Good evening again. The time is 6:45 PM, and I'll now call our next public hearing to order. And I'm going to read this legal notice as well, and then open it up to public comment. Anyone in town who wishes to comment can do so. Legal Notice of Public Hearing, Board of Selectmen, Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:45 PM. Pursuant to Portland Town Charter, Chapter 12, Section 1203.4, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:45 PM at the Buck Foreman Community Room at 265 Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, regarding the proposed supplemental appropriation from the General Fund balance in the amount of $205,000. At the hearing, all interested persons may be heard and written communications will be received. Public access also through Zoom Link A at PortlandCT.org. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portland Board of Selectmen hereby approves the supplemental appropriation from the General Fund balance in the amount of $205,000. The allocations of supplemental appropriations for the General Fund are increases to the Line Item Number 01-093-000-90012, transfers out capital nonrecurring town by $125,000, and increases to Account 01-093-000-90013, transfers out capital nonrecurring Board of Education by $80,000. The funds will be transferred to Fund Eight as follows. Account 0814100089010, Board of Education, system-wide Board of Education Security Upgrades, including doors, for $80,000, and Account 0814100089090, Public Works Building Maintenance Roof Replacements for $125,000. Be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves an increase in estimated revenues for state grants in Account 081410000214, in the amount of $8,724.06 for a school security competitive grant, and a supplemental appropriation to Account 0814100089010, Board of Education, system-wide Board of Education Security Upgrades, including doors, for $8,724.06. A copy of the complete resolution will be voted, to be voted on, is available for a public inspection in the Town Clerk's Office and on the town's website at PortlandCT.org dated at Portland, Connecticut, the seventh day of June 2023, attested Ryan J. Curley. So with that, I'll open it up to public comment. If anyone wishes to comment on either of the items in this, in this motion. And again, this is, so this is a, what we're doing with this is it's a supplemental appropriation for a roof replacement at Portland Town Hall. And I will show everyone that Selectman Dylan stopped by Town Hall today, and he brought some pieces of the Town Hall roof.
I found them on the sidewalk outside the Town Hall.
And, and then also Board of Education Security Upgrades, which is also very important. And we do have a grant for $8,724 that will expire, if I'm not mistaken, right? Dr. Rick?
It's a lot more than that. It's a lot more than that.
It's a lot more than that.
Fifty-four percent of 80,000.
Well, we'll get that back at the end. Yes, correct, correct, yeah. Yeah, so, but this is necessary in order to get the security grant. And then we will get 54% back of the 80,000? Correct. Does anyone wish to comment on this? And again, there'll be another chance at the special town meeting if anyone wants to comment. I think everyone's just here for the votes, though. It's my guess, but... Anybody online? All right. Give it another second. All right. Seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing at 6:50 PM. And I'll now turn things over to our Town Clerk, Michael Tierney, for two special town meetings. So the Board of Selectmen, you can all take a seat in the audience as well.
Just before we start, anybody that's a town resident signed in and has the three ballots, correct?
Michael, use the microphone so we can get you recorded.
Just to confirm, everybody that's a town resident signed in and has the three different ballots. Not, let me know. The time is now 6:51, and I will call the meeting to order. The first order of business is to elect a moderator. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Sean Manning as moderator.
Is there a second?
A second, I motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Are there any other nominations?
I move nominations to be closed.
Second half.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, so Mr. Moderator?
Thank you, Michael. I would next like to read the call of the meeting into the record as published in the River East on June 16th, 2023. I would also ask that the Town Clerk record the return of notice along with the minutes of this meeting. Legal Notice of Special Town Meeting, Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:50 PM, Buck Foreman Community Room, 265 Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, 06480. Pursuant to Chapter 12, Section 1203.4 of the Town Charter, a special town meeting will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:50 PM in the Buck Foreman Community Room, 265 Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, for the following supplemental appropriation. Item one, to approve the supplemental appropriation of $95,000 to the General, General Fund Line Item 01-023-000-14014, private duty, private police duty, and $9,000 to the General Fund Line Item 01-023-000-51001, Gas and Diesel, and an increase in estimated revenue to Line Item 01-000-000-00324, Police Private Duty, in the amount of $104,000 dated this seventh day of June 2023, attested Ryan J. Curley, First Selectman. I would now like to entertain a motion to introduce the resolution entitled Supplemental Appropriation for Police Private Duty Expense and Gas and Diesel Expenses and Increase the Estimated Police Private Duty Revenue, and to waive the reading of the resolution. I will now call for public discussion on the resolution. Anyone? Bein' no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to move the question tonight. Do I have a motion? A second? All in favor?
So we got to, we'll vote.
Oh, we do the vote first.
So this is the blue ticket? So this is the, uh, the blue ticket?
Uh, then you take one. This one? The motion passes with...
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero no, zero abstentions.
I move that we close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Are there any other nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Mr. Moderator?
Thank you, Michael. I would next like to read the call of the meeting into the record as published in the River East on June 16th, 2023. I would also ask that the Town Clerk record the return of notice along with the minutes of this meeting. Legal notice, a special meeting Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:55 PM. Buck Foreman, Community Room, 265 Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, 06480. Pursuant to Chapter 5, Section 503G slash 503H of the Town Charter, a special town meeting will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 6:55 PM in the Buck Foreman Community Room, 265 Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, for the following supplemental appropriation. Item one, to approve the supplemental appropriation from the general fund balance in the amount of $125,000 to assist in the roof replacement projects on town-owned buildings with an emphasis on the Town Hall. The allocations of supplemental appropriations for the general fund is an increase to the line item 01-093-000-90012. Transfers out capital nonrecurring town by $125,000. The funds will be transferred to Fund 8 as follows. 08-141-000-89- I'm sorry, 89090. Public Works Building Maintenance Roof Replacements, $125,000. Item two, to approve the supplemental appropriations from the general fund balance in the amount of $80,000. The allocations of supplemental appropriations for the general fund is an increase to the line item 01-093-000-90013. Transfers out capital nonrecurring B O, Board of Education, by $80,000. The funds will be transferred to Fund 8 as follows. Board of Education, system, Board of Education, system-wide Board of Education security upgrades, including doors, $80,000. A supplemental appropriation to 08-141-000-89010. Board of Education, system-wide Board of Education security upgrades, including doors, for $8,724.06. An increase in estimated revenues for state grants in 08-141-000-00214 in the amount of $8,724.06 for a school security competitive grant. A copy of the complete resolution to be voted on is available for public inspection in the Town Clerk's Office on the town's website, wwwportlandct.org, dated this 7th day of June, 2023. Attest Ryan J. Curley, First Selectman. I would now like to entertain a motion to introduce the resolution entitled, "Supplemental Appropriations Capital Plan Improvements," and to waive the reading I will now call for public discussion on the resolution. Anyone? Being no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to move the two questions tonight.
A little, second. So these are the two, uh, so the, the green one is item number two, the Board of Education, and then the purple one is for the roof.
The results for the votes were roof replacement, 22 yes, 1 no, 0 abstentions. Board of Education security upgrades, 19 yes, 4 nos, 0 abstentions. Both votes pass with a yes. Is there a motion to close this meeting?
I move adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Your guy called me, thank you. I'd say, when he told me who he was, I see him walking by the house all the time. Very helpful. Is he like your replacement eventually?
Thank you, Michael.
Very nice job.
Thank you.
You'll be the best dressed guy there.
Is Tommy coming tonight?
It's, you can't get, every time we finish, we tell you, please, I want to hear two. Feel too lonely. Uh, for, for anyone who came in late and would like an agenda, there's agendas on the table up here. Anybody would like an agenda? Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:10 PM and I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, the next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on June 7th, 2023. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve those.
Thank you, Sean. Is there a second?
A second and motion.
Thank you, John. Any discussion, errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. And I do want to, uh, just tell the board that our recording secretary is not here with us this evening, so the minutes will be taken by Zoom later. So for all the Selectmen and anyone who publicly comments today, please speak loudly so that we can make sure that everything's picked up on, on YouTube. All right, the next item is the acceptance of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the agenda.
A second. Thank you both. That was Sean, who made the motion, and Mike Pouten seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries, thank you. We, I have one item under Communications and Correspondence this evening. Uh, yesterday was our, our first day for our new Senior Center Director, who is here with us this evening. Those of you, many of you may know Sarah already, um, who is, Sarah's a resident of town, who comes with some great experience in the field. We're very excited to have Sarah Keratassius, right? Close enough? Getting there. Um, I just don't know her, Sarah. So, uh, Sarah, would you like to come up and just say, just say hi to the board?
Uh, sure.
Not to put you on the spot or anything, but, um, we put, we did the same thing to Ryan O'Hallpitt when, when he started and, um, so, uh...
He's getting used to it.
You can just go up to the podium, we'll say, we'll just say. So, and I understand, uh, our assistant was off today, so you were...
Yes, it was a very busy day, um, but it went well. Best way to learn is to just jump in, so I'm really looking forward to it and, um, serving the community. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, Sarah.
We just wanted to say welcome.
And make you get up.
Could've brought some pizza, you know?
And Sarah, do you know, is it, actually, maybe somebody else? Next week, we have, it's the Family Day, right? In the park, uh, Liz is not here. It's Monday. Monday, I just wanna just give a little plug for that, um, 'cause I know, uh, that's a, that's a combined effort. Uh, I don't know why my calendar's not working, but anyways, next Monday, the, do you know what Monday is next Monday?
Monday would be the 27th, 26th?
26th, yep. So we'll look forward, I'll see you there. I think there's a petting zoo, there's an ice cream, uh, uh, there's free ice cream, all, all sorts of fun stuff, so... We'll see you there. All right, with, with that, uh, open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to, uh, comment? Is there anyone? No, nope, no one in the chat, okay? Great, so we'll move on, uh, to old business. It's our second meeting of the month, which means it's our monthly report from the Committee on Solidarity. We have, uh, some former, uh, a former member, who's PJ, are you?
I'm up today.
You're up today, okay. Would you like to come up? Anything going on this weekend, PJ?
On behalf of the Committee on Solidarity, first, we wanted to thank Public Works and Ryan for getting those solidarity banners up. We appreciate it, thank you, sir. Um, we also want to remind everyone that we have the Town Resource Pamphlets at, uh, different town buildings throughout, so, um, those have a ton of resources for our community members. Um, and then lastly, we do have Juneteenth coming up this weekend at the Riverfront Park, um, from 11 to 2. We'll have music, DJs, presenters, uh, food, ice cream, just about everything you want there, so, um, everyone's welcome to come. Any questions or anything?
Fingers crossed on the weather, that's all.
That's it. You can help us out with that.
I don't know.
They're gonna be between the showers, don't worry.
I think so. Thank you, though, PJ, a lot of work. All right, so moving on to old business, we have a resolution before you, and this is, as you may recall, we've discussed this at our previous meeting, followed by a public hearing this evening. And this is the utilization of using American Rescue Funds for up to thirty-five thousand dollars for the replacement of a generator at Company Three Firehouse, which is, as Chief Shea told us, badly needed. So this is another one of those items that I think this board can, can check off the capital improvement list, and thanks to the American Rescue Plan Act, without impacting our, our annual budget, so. Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
To, you want?
To, you want me to read this in? I make a motion, I'll read it, I'll read the resolution. Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. American Rescue Plan Funds, Company Number Three, Generator and Related Propane Tank Replacement. Whereas the Town of Portland is in receipt of American Rescue Plan Funds, and whereas up to ten million of ARPA funds can be used for a wide range of expenditures due to final rule regarding revenue loss, and whereas the town has a need to replace the generator and propane tank at Firehouse Company Number Three, which is, has aged past its useful lifecycle, and whereas the cost of replacement is estimated to be at thirty-five thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, hereby approves the use of ARPA funds up to thirty-five thousand dollars for the replacement of Company Three Generator and Related Propane Tanks.
Sean, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ralph. Any discussion on this? Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. The next item on tonight's agenda is appointments and reappointments. Do we have any appointments this evening? Anybody, Bobby's not here. No appointments, all right. We'll move on to new business. There's a resolution in your packet this evening for Hilltop Drive Road, or Hilltop Drive Reconstruction and Infrastructure Improvements. Now, our Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, is here to explain this, so Ryan, if you'd like to come up. But basically, with our, with our bond from twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen, we have some, about four hundred eight thousand dollars in additional funds after our other projects were completed. And with this, we looked for other infrastructure projects that, that were close in proximity, that we could get done with this additional, these additional dollars. And, and so I'll let Ryan talk about the, the pipes in the road up there, so.
So, yeah, I was trying to find a, a road that fit the four hundred thousand dollar budget with redoing the road and making sure the water and sewer lines underneath are in good shape. So this one lines up well, where we could replace the whole water line and then redo the whole road after. We should be able to. I don't have the final numbers yet, but estimating from other projects around town and recent water projects, this should line up pretty close to the full amount, and it's, and it's right there adjacent to Spring Street. So it'd be, it'd be using the rest of that funding that we used on the Spring Street Road Reconstruction and going right down Hilltop Drive, all the way down to the end. That's, that's another asbestos cement pipe in town. And as you know, we're actively trying to, you know, take the asbestos out and replace it.
Oh, how many feet is that of pipe in there?
Eleven hundred.
It's asbestos pipe, right?
Yeah, asbestos cement pipe. And the, what was happening on Spring Street, I was told, is there were several, you know, really bad blowouts with the asbestos pipe, and obviously that's why Spring Street was a priority several years ago, so, yeah, we don't want the same thing happening right around the corner there.
Nope, this is, this is, this is before this board, so this is, oh, the, the funds are allocated, so.
It looks like a, a good match for the remaining balance from the previous project. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't pursue it.
Was there any other project that was also on the top, like two or three, that this was in consideration against?
There's several roads in, in Proud Acres, but we're already having a project over there on Russell. And without trying to put contractors on top of each other, do all the work in one area, this is a good way to keep the work spread out.
And it's good because it's consistent with the, the vote that was done the first time, what they were voting for, and it's consistent with that same solution.
Exactly, yeah, what I was looking for, a similar project.
And close proximity as well, right next to Spring Street.
Same neighborhood.
There'd be the other possibility, if we do this project, where I could leave a stub at the end of Dogwood, and in speaking with, with Bill and Mike, possibly next year, we could do Dogwood ourselves. It's short enough, it's three, four hundred feet, but that's something, you know, we'll, we'll look at after the project is done, but initial thoughts. All depending on what else is going on around town with, with highway and water at the time, but I'm hoping that's what we could do.
So you need a resolution right here?
Yeah.
I will, I will try, struggling health-wise, but we will try. Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, June twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. Resolution, Hilltop Drive Road Reconstruction and Infrastructure Improvements. Whereas the Board of Selectmen approved an appropriation of bond authorization in twenty sixteen and subsequent bond issuance in twenty eighteen that included two point five million dollars for the reconstruction and repair of various town roads, roadside elements, which shall include, but shall not be limited to related water and sewer infrastructure improvements, and whereas a total of two million ninety-one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars of the funds were used for Spring Street and related area road reconstruction project activity, which was recorded in Fund Twenty-Eight on the Financial System. And whereas the Spring Street project is complete, and whereas there remains a balance of four hundred eight thousand and three dollars in Fund Twenty-Eight, and whereas the Public Works Department has identified a road that needs to be improved while also replacing asbestos cement pipe water main. And whereas the Public Works Department recommends the use of the remaining balance of funds for Hilltop Drive Road Reconstruction with replacement of asbestos cement water main. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the use of remaining twenty eighteen fund, bond funds available for road reconstruction and repairs of town roads on Hilltop Drive, which shall include but not limited to water and sewer infrastructure improvements.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you, Ralph, and thank you, John. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you, Ryan. The next item on tonight's agenda is setting, we have two requirements, two public hearing dates that we need to set for our July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. One of the requirements on our CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant, that we receive for Portland, both are Portland Senior Center, as well as our Shelter Diversion Grant that we're running at the Buck Foreman downstairs through Youth Services, through Mercy Housing. Both of these grants are funded by the Department of Housing, and they require public hearings throughout the, the status updates on these, on these projects. So I am proposing that we hold a public hearing at six forty PM on July nineteenth to discuss the progress of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program for improvements to the Portland Senior Center, so I'm looking for a motion.
I make, I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. So, yeah, we just, we'll, we'll have the public hearing, we'll provide an update. So, and fulfill our grant requirements with that as well. And so the other public hearing I'm proposing is for six fifty PM on July nineteenth to discuss the progress of the fiscal year twenty twenty, Community Development Block Grant Program for a homeless diversion program. So with that.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Sean, thank you, John. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. So we will hold a public hearing at six forty PM on July nineteenth for the Portland Senior Center Grant, and then at six fifty PM, we will hold a second public hearing for the Shelter or Homeless Diversion Grant. So thank you all. Next is refunds of excess payments.
I'll read that, seeing Bob is not here.
Sure.
Refunds of excess payments, Peter J. and Victoria J. Solinsky, two hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-two cents.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you both. That was Sean, who made the motion, and Ralph, who seconded. All right, next up is Status and Committee Reports. I have a, a few items today. One, I probably should have mentioned this under Communications and Correspondence, but I, I want this board to know I'm receiving more and more requests, and I'm sure you have as well, to turn maybe a couple of our tennis courts into pickleball courts in town.
Every weekend I get a request.
And, and so I, I've gotten a number of emails now, and, and I think that this is something that I think we should look into. I don't think it costs a lot of money, but one of the issues I was talking with Tom about, about doing this is, unfortunately, our, and I actually, I wish Bob were still here, because our, as our track, you know, needs to be replaced at the high school, we just redid the tennis courts not very long ago, and unfortunately, they're already turning into rough shape up there. And so I have to look into the feasibility of being able to do this, because what we don't want is, we don't want to turn something into, you know, a pickleball court and create an even bigger hazard.
The only, the only other question I have, and I'm not anti-pickleball at all, but what is the CIAC requirement for the high school tennis team? How many courts do we, are we required to have?
So, yeah, that's a good question. We would need to look at that. We certainly don't want to put the high school at a disadvantage or anything, or, you know, and jeopardize anything, but.
I have another thing too, while you're in the high school, before I forget, is if we do, that the high school, isn't it restricted? Like they can't come up and play during the day?
They'll be able to play during the school hours.
During the school hours, you wouldn't be able to play, so.
Yeah, that's what I.
But.
But they probably can't do, I mean, tennis probably is the same situation. I mean, they must come after school, because they can't, they're not allowed to come during the day.
So, one thing I did learn is, I believe our, the area right next to the biz that is set up for pickleball currently, but we don't have a net there, because we can't put the net up, because it will create, you know, a tripping hazard for the, with the school kids, very sore. So we did talk about that as another potential location. It is set up for that already, but people could be, could play there now. I am told they would just have to bring their own net and set up their own net. So it's kind of seems not feasible right now, but I guess I'll do some more research on this and get back to the board. I just wanted to mention that, because the, the number of emails I'm receiving seems to be increasing quite a bit.
And it's the third, just, you know, throwing another alternative out there. It might be worth seeing if there's, if there are grants out there, and if there's enough interest to maybe raise some money for it. Is there feasibility of putting a pickleball or two court in at the Tom Park?
Yeah.
Realistically, there's probably not the road, but.
I'm just thinking if the other two schools don't work out, where else do you go? I know. Yeah, well, I mean, I think honestly, I mean, we could look into other locations, but the easiest and the most affordable way to do it is to just convert.
Convert the tennis court.
You know, I don't have the exact numbers, but I'm told it's, it's not a lot to convert. But again, if we're gonna have to redo the tennis courts already, I mean, that would be expensive, and so that's something that, you know, and I just wanted to bring this up, you know, just to, you know, talk about it, you know. We can, we can work out a solution. I don't have a solution today, but I just wanted to let you know that this is, this is something that a lot of people are, are requesting.
Yeah, we, at Park, I don't remember if it was two, three months ago, I don't remember when it was, but we, we actually, at the parking rec, I mean, they had a discussion about it, and talked about the idea of whether you would have nets that they could, you know, you'd sign out to borrow the nets. The only thing I don't know is if you can have portable nets, or you do have to have it, you know, and plant it in the ground, because that would make it more, obviously, the tripping hazard, or if it's, you know, portable nets can work, then that's something, you know, parking rec, it's certainly, probably, you know, have the nets and just sign them out and make use of them.
And pickleball, you play with like a wiffle ball, right?
Yes.
So the nets probably don't have to be as heavy as a tennis net, or almost like a modified volleyball kind of net, right?
I have not played pickleball.
I want to, it looks great, but.
I'll get some more information for you, because I get asked every weekend from someone, so she plays every day.
Maybe you could attend a game, maybe play and get back to us.
I will talk to her, she'll walk me, she'll walk me through everything, and she will give me all the rules if I ask her, all the requirements, and I'll have them on your desk.
Great.
There you go.
All right, so I wanted to mention that. The other thing, some finally good news is the, the rumble strips are being added to Route Seventeen, finally.
Was that your deal, or was that, who wanted the rumble strips?
It was the DOT said they were putting.
The DOT, when they initially.
No, I mean, who was the one on the board?
Bobby keeps asking about it.
He's not here, but when he comes back from vacation, he will make sure he stays in the right lane now, so. So no, that's really good. We wanted that to happen, and so it's finally going on currently. And so I want to let the board know that we had a, another incident at Great Hill Lake with a, a beaver dam breaking. I'm not sure if, you, you may have heard about this, but we had, there's a, there's a brook that goes into Great Hill Lake, and at the top of the brook, there's a very, very large beaver dam. And last year, that beaver dam broke, and, and it caused significant damage. It washed out the road right by Great Hill Lake to get to the Fireman's Grounds picnic area, and it, and it dumped a lot of additional sediment and plants and things that you don't want to wind up in the lake when this beaver dam broke. And so what I, we thought was kind of a freak occurrence, happened again a couple of weeks ago. Ryan and I went out to inspect it. It happened, I want to say it'll be two weeks ago this Friday. And, and so once again, it washed out the road. Public Works has repaired that road.
We haven't paved it back yet.
It hasn't been paved back yet.
We brought the gravel back and mumbled it off, but we want to make sure we contact the homeowner and relocate these beavers.
I was just gonna say, has there been an effort to, to trap them and move out?
Probably about ten thousand dollars in asphalt.
Oh, wow.
To repair that whole section, the whole end of Great Hill.
Whose property is the dam on?
So the, the property owner, I believe, is Peter Gardner, and I, I'd need to write him a letter, basically asking for permission.
This is right up at the end of the road across from the picnic grounds?
It's actually behind Mashamisick Trail, that, that neighborhood up there, right off of Great Hill Road and Stewart Hill Road. He's got a large piece of land.
He's got a large piece of land back there, and if you look on Google Maps, it'll look like a pond up there, but it's supposed to just be a brook. So, it, it built up so much that it, it looks like a pond, all the trees are dead up there. I mean, the water was running for like two hours heavily.
And this is after the same thing happening last year. And honestly, I was surprised because I didn't think there would be enough water to do anything just a year later. And once again, it washed out the road, and this was, it wasn't as high as last year, but it was pretty close. So, this is not, this will happen again if we don't get these beavers relocated, unfortunately. So.
So, yeah, we want to get that done first, and then we'll, and then we'll repave the road knowing, or hoping that it doesn't happen again. It's something I'm going to ask for access so we can periodically check to make sure it's not happening, you know, at least a few times a year, someone go up and, and look.
Who's responsible for the cost of moving the beavers?
It might, it may be us.
I mean, it's, I guess whoever is being impacted, I would think would want to be the ones to hire someone, which would be the town at this point.
So, the.
We're lucky, yeah, there's no homeowners in between, or else their house would have been washed out.
And as you may know, Great Hill Lake is maintained or deep overseas, Great Hill Lake. And right now, though, there, there's a number of residents that are alarmed with the, you know, these washouts now, and the, there's an invasive species that has entered the lake. And so, there was a meeting that was held last night, I believe, in the, in the Mary Flood Room at the library with, I think about seventy residents around Great Hill Lake showed up for this. And, and so, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention because they'll have more meetings going forward, and I think it would be good if, you know, some of us wanted to attend and, you know, make sure that the town is doing all we can to support, you know, Great Hill Lake is a, it's a.
It's a great lake.
It's a hidden gem, yeah, in town, so we want to make sure that we do what we can to keep it, to keep it nice.
And every time you get one of those breaches, that, that lake isn't that deep, and you keep running sediment into it. I remember as a kid swimming across the lake, and the grass would be touching your feet.
Yeah, there was a lot of visible debris when we went over there.
It was.
You could see all the wood or dirt, whatever washed in there, it was very obvious. And I did email a D E P. about the overgrowth, and I think they came out, tested the water once. No, no resolution on the most recent email after the dam had broke. I did hear back from them, but I didn't hear about what they were going to do, or if they're going to test the water again.
So, are those two separate problems, the invasive species in the beaver dam, or is it?
We don't know if it's connected or not.
Yeah, we don't know. They could be related, when the beaver dam, you know, washes everything in there, there could be seeds that, you know.
But if there's a way that we can get some assistance from Deep or somebody else and tie the two together, that would be the perfect solution.
Deep did attend, I believe, a representative from Deep attended the meeting last night at Great Hill Lake, and so there, they, there are options. I think, and Sean was with me today, you were in town hall.
Yeah, there were several options. One was raking it, herbicides, carp, there was one other, like there was four, I can't remember the four.
Lowering, lowering.
Low, yes.
Draining, draining the lake, basically. And, but there's not a perfect solution, so, you know, they're going to work and figure out something, but I just wanted to update you guys on that, and thank you, Ryan, and we'll, more to come, I suppose.
Sounds like there's an engineer up on that pond that might have had a civil engineering degree by the size of the dam he's building.
It's a very big dam, very big. I think I have some pictures of it.
Check out Google Maps when you get a, it's impressive.
It is.
Yeah, go, go right to the Mashamisick Trail neighborhood, and then look to the right, and you'll see what looks like a pond, but if you flip it to, like, road view, it just shows a brook coming down, there's no, that's supposed to be a pond there.
Wow. Last year, when it let go, some people had some video around the lake, and there was so much water coming down, it was just unbelievable. Like Wadsworth Falls.
Mm-hmm, I have a video of that as well, but, all right, well, so anyway, more to come on that, I just wanted to, to inform you all on that. And then, the other update you may have seen is that the track at our high school is now closed going forward while the construction is now mobilizing, and we're excited for that to kick off. And it will be reopened with a new track in the fall, so, so thank you. So, if you do, if you do want to use the tennis courts, just park at the lower lot, don't park in the, in the top lot at the high school right now. All right, that's all I have.
One quick question, have we heard back yet on the solar panels?
Yes, yes, we did. Thank you for actually reminding me. We were waitlisted on the solar panels, which is not, never a great thing. But a couple of things, one is I have to touch base with Alan Savins and Rob Clea on this, but from what I understand, I was very surprised that we were waitlisted. I thought, I really thought we were a sure bet.
Yeah.
I thought we were right in there. But a couple of things, one is just because we're waitlisted, if somebody falls out, we could still, you know, make it in with this round. The other thing is there's another round in August, so two months from now, we can apply again and give it another shot. So, this is certainly not an issue that we're going to, you know, leave alone, and we're not going to give up on this, we're going to, we're going to keep going until we get it. But, yeah, I was very disappointed, I'm glad you reminded me, John, because that was, that was a tough one to hear on that call, because I thought we were going to get that.
Maybe I shouldn't bring it up.
So, Ralph, do you have any updates?
Yep. I'll go at E D C. first. Couple things to note, they, they are going to be voting on their quarterly business award, so at their next meeting, they're going to vote on that, so they got some entries. And they're also going to be planning to walk with the garden club down Main Street to look at all of the great job the businesses did for doing their plantings around their business, so they'll be walking with the garden club to evaluate the work that was done, because there'll be someone selected for, I don't know, I don't remember how many acknowledgements they're going to have for it, but obviously, they'll be walking along and making a decision on that. And you already mentioned, obviously, the summer kickoff's coming, which we talked about. With regards to the library, the big thing to mention there is, at the last meeting, I talked about how the library, they're planning to look at their long-range plan. And so, one of the approaches was to get in, they, they put in and made a request to see if they could become part of the Connecticut Library Consortium that would work together to come up with a long-range plan for each town. Seven towns were selected, and we happen to be one of them. So, I know that the director's been working hard with Tom to figure out how to be able to finance it, it's going to cost about five thousand dollars to do that. But the good thing about it is that I, there's a couple, there's at least a couple of towns, I couldn't remember the list offhand, but they're towns that local to us. So, they don't necessarily work, they work together to understand the process and get answers to questions that they have during the process. So, there'll be a working group, all working to put together their own long-range plan, so this, that should be a good opportunity, and the director to get a really good sense of, you know, how things are going in town. And there's a Read and Recycle event on Saturday that should be noted, so. That's what I had.
Great, thank you, Ralph. Does anyone have any other status committee reports?
Scale House.
Yeah, that's a good one, that's a good one, thank you. Today, or on Monday, the Scale House at two forty-eight Brownstone Avenue finally came down, and I was down there earlier this afternoon and took some pictures. It's, it looks good. I have a meeting, Ryan and I have a meeting on Friday with Ty and Bond and Enviro to, to look at, you know, the closing out the project, and basically, at this point, it's how to best utilize the remaining grant dollars that we have and to maximize this project, so then we can, then we can do that R F P. that we were looking to do and get this, get this area revitalized.
Do you have an idea of how much money we would have left over from the grant?
Right now, I, Ty and Bond is working on all that. So, there's a couple of change orders that they had to provide for us with, with this. We've had to be a little flexible with this project because you don't necessarily know where the contaminated soils are ahead of time, you have an idea, but it's not until you, you get in there, and we found, unfortunately, we found a few extra tanks that we, that we didn't know about going in.
A gift that keeps on giving.
Exactly, so, and each one of those tanks can add, can add cost to the project and all that, and has to get removed. So, Ty and Bond's working on that, and they'll have a, an updated number for us that we can use to go forward, but, you know, the, the real goal right now is to, you know, finish all the remediation of the soil so that we can, Ty and Bond can sign off on it as our engineers and say that, you know, it's, it's been decontaminated to the best of our ability, basically, and, and we want to make it as flat and attractive for future development as possible as well.
Is there any plan on, with the building, the garage we have there, maybe cleaning that up a little bit before we go out with the R F P. so when people come to look at the property, there's windows in the garage doors, there's, it's painted, there's no graffiti, those little trees are cut down, just, I think that would just, a little curb appeal?
I think that's a great idea, yeah, and it's something that we can discuss, Ryan and I can talk about that, I mean, but, yeah, we really, I mean, the whole point is to dress up this area. And actually, I met with some planners too, a few weeks back, that Ty and Bond had suggested that, you know, we, that I meet with and we tour the area, and they had some ideas of just how to, how we could dress up the area in the meantime, and it was interesting, you know.
Stage it.
Stage it, yeah, really, yeah, really try to, you know, freshen it up, so, some of, you know, I'm, I'm looking into how we can do some of these ideas. They were, they were feasible ideas, but they required us reaching out to the property owner of the tar plant that's there, seeing if they'd allow us to do some painting of, you know, some of their equipment and whatnot. And so, really, if, you know, some, it doesn't cost a lot to, you know, to get somebody to paint something, just to dress something up a little while we continue to improve. They also suggested maybe even painting a yellow sidewalk, you know, not putting in a sidewalk, but if you paint, you know, a sidewalk, it, it could dress it up as well.
Sounds like H G T V.
It was, yeah, I mean, it was, it was interesting, so it was, there were some good ideas, and we'll, we'll look at, so more to come on that, but, but, yeah, thank you, thank you, Sean. Anything else under Status and Committee Reports? Seeing none, public comment? All right, we'll move on to general informal discussion, is there anything? Okay, great, and I have nothing under the follow-up items this evening, so entertain a motion.
Make a motion adjourn.
All right, thank you, Sean, and thank you, Ralph, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone, thank you.